The Council of the City of Norfolk is now in session. This meeting is necessary for the council to continue operations of the city and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. And is being held pursuant to and in compliance with City of Norfolk Ordinance 47967 as authorized by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, and will be conducted telephonically and electronically. Notice of this meeting was given to the public on June 5th in the Virginian Pallet, and electronic copy of the agenda was posted on the city's website on June 5th. Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Mrs. Doyle?
Here.
Mrs. Graves? Mrs. Graves?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Clark, please read the resolution. Dismissed with the minutes of our previous meeting.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Tonight, we have an invitation to bid. We have, then we'll take up public hearings, then the consent agenda, which we voted on in the block. If any member of the council or the public wishes to discuss an item, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Following the consent agenda, we'll take up regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. There is no new business tonight. To address the council, you should have registered to speak prior to this meeting. Mr. Clark, before we do I be one, I want to first thank the administration, thank our police department, Team Norfolk, every council member, but more importantly, the residents. The residents, corporate citizens, our faith-based community, civic organizations, and all who this past week demonstrated and protested in a very peaceful way in the City of Norfolk, in a very non-violent way. It speaks volumes to the love and care that our residents, our corporate citizens, our faith-based community, our civic organizations, they have for our city. And every council member, let me say thank you for just standing for rights and standing for justice. And to all the residents and everyone who's demonstrating and continuing to pour out, we see you in the City of Norfolk, but more importantly, this council, we hear you. And tonight, I want to take a resolution out of order, Mr. Clark, and I'll read the resolution. And this is a resolution of the City Council of Norfolk to acknowledge not only do we see, but we actually hear. It says, "Whereas the City of Norfolk is committed to the just administration of public safety, and our police department that safeguards the rights, freedoms, and safety of every resident. And whereas, the Norfolk Police Department is committed to a model community-oriented policing and public safety initiatives that are designed to help build communities using a whole-of-government approach. And whereas, a community-oriented police department is essential in ensuring these objectives: the safety of every citizen, their lives, and the spirit of democratic order. And whereas, as a city, we are grateful for the service, the courage, and contributions of law enforcement officers committed to building community and pursuing safe de-escalation as the ultimate goal when responding to potentially violent incidents. And whereas, the members of the Norfolk City Council remain dedicated to public engagement, justice, and pursuing public safety strategies that limit interventions, improve community interactions, and de-escalate potentially violent situations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norfolk, Section 1, that the Norfolk City Council hereby directs the city manager to update its general order on use of force to banning high-speed police chases in all cases other than those involving felonies which have resulted in serious injury or death. Section 2, that the manager petition the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to end its mandate that requires the Commonwealth's police departments to train its officers in employing karate choke holds. Section 3, that the manager publish current Norfolk Police Department policy and procedure manual, all general orders, special orders, and update annual reports on regular basis. These items shall be made available to the public on the City of Norfolk website and on Open Data platform." Mr. Clark?
Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Clark, I do it.
Okay, the next item is the receipt of bids pursuant to invitation to bid and notice of public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to accept bids for a long-term lease for a term of five years with the option to renew the lease for five additional one-year periods at the City of Norfolk property located at the intersection of Hampton Boulevard and 50th Street, subject to certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Clark, how many bids have been received?
Received one, sir.
Please read and mark it for identification.
Okay, this bid is from ODU, and they want to use the lot for parking for students, faculty, and staff for a term of five years, from and including the first day of July 2020 and ending June 30th, 2025. Lease may be renewed annually up to five additional one-year terms. And it says, "ODU will share equally with the city any net revenues derived from fees collected for the use of the property above the sum of $18,000 annually."
Are there any other bids offered? All right, if there are no additional bids offered, I declare the bidding closed. If there are any member of the public wishes to be heard on this matter?
Allen, do we have anybody? No, no one's calling.
All right, if there's no member of the public wishes to be heard on the matter, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from staff regarding the bid received from Old Dominion University?
Sir, city staff recommends that the bid by Old Dominion University be reviewed by city staff, and a recommendation be brought back to this council at the July 14th, 2020 meeting.
Is there a motion to continue this matter to the next meeting of the City Council on July 14th, 2020?
I move that we continue I be one.
I second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Mr. Clark, call the roll.
Yeah, the motion is to continue until July 14th, 2020. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clark, page one.
Public hearing once scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments to amend and reordain the Code of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, 1979 by adding a new chapter, 45.8, entitled Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy CPACE Financing Program, so as to establish the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Financing Program pursuant to 15.2-958.3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended.
Adopt the Dr. Fowler?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. So this is an ordinance on CPACE, which comes back to you all after some time. In fact, I think the initial conversations on this occurred before I even became city manager. So during the time, what the administration has been doing with the city attorney's office is crafting the language for the ordinance that you see in front of you. What I really wanted to do this evening, and I realize this is a bit unorthodox, but I wanted to get an opportunity to discuss really the ordinance and the key part of this ordinance, which is if you remember back when these conversations were occurring, there were really two routes that the administration of the program could go. One route was where the city essentially stood up a department or dedicated staff to create a program guide for the program, coordinate billing and collection process, essentially become the servicer of the CPACE loan. The other option that emerged then was to go after a third-party contract or contract with a third-party program administrator. We had already been down the route of thinking that the program administration option was the better option. I think, given current budget constraints, we would all agree that it's really infeasible to think about standing up a program internally at this point. Therefore, this ordinance proposes that the city contract with a program administrator. That's found in Section 45.8-40. This section also allows for the city to contract with an established CPACE administrator, which might be chosen by the Commonwealth should the Commonwealth decide to pick such a public administrator at a later date. And that's in there primarily because the Commonwealth has hinted at the possibility that they would pick a statewide program administrator, that then localities would be allowed to opt into using that administrator. One of the points that I really want to make clear to everyone is that while we're contracting with a program administrator here, there are no net new costs to the City of Norfolk in these financial times. That would be really difficult for us to figure out a way to pay for. So the fees for the administration of the program actually come from borrower closing cost fees. We will have to come back to this body at a later date to determine the fee amount after we contract with a program administrator, and we get some estimate of those administrative costs. And so we would come back with another resolution to council in terms of setting fees for this program. But I did want to make it very, very clear that the ordinance that is in front of you this evening is to go the third-party administration route and not handle billing, collections, servicing, the program guide, and indeed, the whole application process for this internally. We will contract with a program administrator for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. McClellan?
Dr. Fowler, thank you for that additional information, but since people haven't heard about what CPACE is for a long time, maybe it would be helpful to have just a quick overview as to why the city want to adopt this?
Sure.
As a financing tool for our property owners to enlist or create resilience infrastructure, energy efficiency infrastructure, and renewable energy infrastructure. And this is a really great financing tool that we can allow a new development and redevelopment in the City of Norfolk. And it's a tool in our toolbox that, to your point, Chip, will cost the city nothing. So we've been working on this. Councilwoman Johnson, and I have been talking about this for so many years, and we're really excited to get here. So I appreciate the minutia of the administrator issue, but at the top level, this is just going to allow us, hopefully, to attract development that will fit with our climate action plan and our resilience quotient for the City of Norfolk. So just want to make sure that was included. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes. Mrs. Doyle?
When is the effective date of the administration of this program?
I mean, we have a period of time where we have to engage in an RFP process in order for us to contract with the program administrator. So should this be passed by council this evening, we would immediately begin the RFP process for the program administrator. We then need to sit with the program administrator, identify what the program fees would be. Then we would have to come back to council to have an additional resolution laying out how we would charge for the administration of the program. So we have a bit of time yet before we would get to actually launch the program. I guess, use the phrase "launch loosely" there. But once this is approved this evening, we would proceed forward in a pretty expeditious fashion to be able to move forward with anybody that would want to take advantage of this program.
Thank you.
Chip, that's a great question, Councilwoman Doyle. Are we going to ride on somebody else's RFP so we could expedite the process?
So we do have... Yes, ma'am. So we do have, now that we have decided to go the program administration route, and we are having an RFP process, there are other localities in Virginia that do it this manner, and so we do have RFPs that we can look at and go off of. In addition, you know, there has been the speculation that the state may do it at the state level in terms of a program administrator. And so they also have been thinking about what an RFP for that might look like. So I believe in both ways, whether it's other localities or the Commonwealth themselves, we have some models to work off of to move forward with an RFP pretty quickly.
So just to be clear, the state's not looking at it. It was legislation that was passed to create a state administrator in this past General Assembly. So they will, after July 1st, be putting the RFP out for a state administrator statewide.
That is our understanding. Correct. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we would like to move, I think what we would like to do is move a little quicker than that, but always have as that one clause in 45.8-40 allows us to circle back and basically ride along with the Commonwealth in their process.
Okay. Others? Okay, Mr. Clark?
Sure. I then ordinance to amend and reordain the Code of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, 1979 by adding a new chapter, 45.8, entitled Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy CPACE Financing Program, so as to establish the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Financing Program pursuant to 15.2-958.3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Dismissed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye. And just real quick, the screen that we're seeing is just a generic screen that says June 9th, 2020, Norfolk City Council. Was there supposed to be a presentation to go along with the...
I'm being told no, Tommy.
Okay, there's a screen share that is just a generic screen share. Just wanted to let you guys know that. Good eye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Page two.
Public hearing two scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the conveyance to Harvey Nash of that certain parcel of property located at 862 and 864 8th Avenue in accordance with the terms and condition of the purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain condition. I then ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Harvey Nash of those certain parcels of property located at 862 and 864 8th Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon satisfaction of a certain condition. Dismissed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Page three.
Public hearing three scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the conveyance to Harvey Nash of that certain parcel of property located at 731 Washington Avenue in accordance with the terms and condition of the purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions. I then ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Harvey Nash of that certain parcel of property located at 731 Washington Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon the satisfaction of a certain condition. Dismissed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clark, the consent agenda, C1?
We'll take out C9.
And we'll pass consent agenda excluding C9.
Correct. Adopt the consent agenda with the exception of C9. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clark, the motion is to continue C9 to June 23rd?
That is correct, sir. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Clark? R1?
R1 is an ordinance approving the exercise by the Norfolk Airport Authority of powers conferred by Chapter 34 Acts of Assembly of Virginia of 1918, as amended, and Section 144 of the Norfolk Charter, as amended, in conjunction with issuance not to exceed $30 million of the airport's revenue obligations to finance the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain capital improvements at Norfolk International Airport, and to pay costs associated with issuance of such obligations. Dismissed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Riddick.
Yes. Where are we on that new runway? Did they turn us down? I've been trying to get it.
I think the best way to say it is that we're still working on it.
Okay. Okay, I vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
It's my understanding that the military wrote letters opposing the second runway, but they're continuing to work on, working with the military on that.
That's correct.
How do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R2?
R2 is an ordinance approving amendment to a lease agreement between the City of Norfolk and Vessel Craft Coffee LLC for the space located within the Norfolk City Hall. Dismissed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
I didn't realize that we had to approve this, but what I think going forward is that if we have any vendors who are leasing space in City Hall, it probably would be a good idea to put this particular language that we have here, or something similar, in their lease. And so it would protect them, and it would be an act of good faith on our part that if we ever had to close down the city for any reason, you know, like maybe a second round of COVID-19, or whatever the case may be, that from the date of shutdown through the date of reopening, or whatever, that their rent is automatically canceled, or whatever terminology it is you want to use. But I think that if we could consider doing that for any other tenant in the city, I think that would be helpful. I vote aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Was there a reason why they only requested April?
Yeah, Councilman, effectively, we shut City Hall down near the end of March. So they had already made their March rent payment.
And they requested, abated, until we reopen?
Until we go, right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed the part that said until they were... I was only looking at the April 2020. Aye.
Oh, I see.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you.
R3?
R3 is an ordinance amending the FY 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance, number 47636, so as to accept, appropriate, and authorize the expenditure of grant funds up to the sum of $8,928,000 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Children's Services Act Funds Pool and previously appropriated local matching funds in the amount of $3,172,000 for the Children's Services Act program from the city through its Department of Human Services, and $300,000 from the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Dismissed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R4?
R4 is a resolution requesting that the Circuit Court of the City of Norfolk order a referendum on the question of whether casino gaming shall be permitted in the City of Norfolk to be included in the regular general election of November 3, 2020. Adopt the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a quick question?
Yes, Mr. Smigel?
Mr. Pischko, is there a actual, the actual language that's going to be used on the referendum at the end of this resolution? That's the actual statement?
There is language in the state code. And I don't believe that we put it in this resolution. But the language is in the state code. That is legislated. That language will be given to the court and the registrar.
Is it a, do you remember if it's a, I'm trying to remember. It's been so long since we talked about it. But is it a generic statement about approving gaming casinos, not specific to Paw Monkey Indians, or any type of language like that?
Yes, I believe you are correct. It's approval of the concept.
Yeah, Tommy, from my recollection, the language speaks very generally. Shall gaming be permitted? And there are five localities, of course, that the General Assembly cited in the legislation. And so the language will be very general, asking, "Shall gaming be permitted in the City of Norfolk?"
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Doyle?
Just to, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, this still has to go through the lottery board?
That is, that is correct.
So actually, yeah, Councilwoman, that's a good point. So part of the referendum is also the approval by the lottery, you know, subject to the approval by the lottery board. So I think, so I have it right here. So it's, "Shall casino gaming be permitted at a casino gaming establishment in your location as may be approved by the Virginia Lottery Board?"
Okay.
Very general.
Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R5?
R5 is an ordinance granting conditional use permits to authorize the operation of a convenience store with the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption and the sale of smoking or vaping products named marketplace soups and salads on property located at 100 Brook Avenue. Dispense with the-
Can I have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. The vaping, is this an item that, you know, they help, are saying that it's bad vaping?
Mr. Riddick, it's off-premises.
Now, this one is, so smoking-
Okay.
Yeah, so smoking and vaping are together. So this one is going to be selling smoking products off-premise for off-premise consumption, but not vaping.
So the vaping is going to be on-premise?
They're not doing vaping.
So, okay.
They're not selling or doing vaping.
Okay, Mr. Riddick, that-
It's smoking products off-premise.
Dispense with the charter requirement?
Mr. Riddick, further?
Yes, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Alan, I abstain from this one.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clark, R6, is there a motion?
Yeah, the motion is to continue this, sir, until June the 23rd.
Okay.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye to the motion to continue till the 23rd. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Correct. Mrs. Graves?
Didn't we already continue this once before?
That's correct.
So why are we continuing it again? I know there's a motion, but what's the reasoning behind it?
That I'm not, I wasn't aware of the motion, but I am aware that what they're proposing to do is use gray machines. And I know that the authority to operate gray machines outside of an ABC establishment is very uncertain and does not permit the Queen of Virginia machines, which they, I think, intend to use. So I think there are several questions still about it, but I'm not the one that was aware of the motion to continue. But I was aware that there are issues with gray machines notwithstanding last session's legislation.
And you said gray machines or cleaner green machines? What did you say there?
Oh, Queen. The primary distributor is a company in Pennsylvania that trains under the name Queen. And the Queen machines provide cash payouts, that they're what we typically refer to as gray machines, and that this operator includes Queen machines, which is not permitted in the family entertainment centers, but is permitted in ABC establishments just for one year. And so I know there are questions and issues, but I don't know, I assume that's the reason that we've asked for it to be considered, continued because of these questions.
And Angela, I can help a little bit too with this. The purpose of the law that was passed by the General Assembly to allow these to operate was in existing establishments that had ABC licenses. This establishment does not have an existing ABC license. And so there, when the last, the last time the gaming committee met on this, there was so much misinformation and lack of information about the intentions of the General Assembly with these establishments that we have come up with a lot of new information and now have a better understanding. In fact, I will be speaking with Councilwoman Johnson, but we will probably have to move our date up of our gaming committee, which I think was originally supposed to meet after this date in order for us to be able to consider with this new information that's there. And this establishment has operated previously as a vape establishment that had four machines in it, and they're requesting to go up to 60 machines. And I believe they have applied for an ABC license now, but all of this has to be done by June 30th. There is a $1,200 tax per machine per month that's been established for one year, and the locality gets $144 per machine per month off of any gray machine in Norfolk. So this includes the ones that are existing in 7-Elevens. And so the gaming committee will need to discuss whether or not these types of establishments were what the General Assembly's intentions were and bringing that recommendation back to council, which I don't believe it was originally the intentions of the General Assembly for these to pop up. So just to give you an example, this would be a mini Rosies. So if you can imagine a Rosies establishment in, with 60 of these kind of gambling machines in one location with just alcohol, no food, I think it's something that we need to have some continued conversations. And I believe there's a few more of these that may pop up before the last, before the end of the month. And so the gaming committee would like to discuss this further.
How can they have alcohol and no food? I thought you had to have food if you had alcohol.
I believe that's correct. And this new legislation clearly permits gray machines for a year if you have an ABC license. And so I understand some entities are just getting the license in order to have the gray machines and may or may not qualify to serve the alcohol, but believe that they qualify for gray machines because they've got the license. So as Mr. Smigel says, this legislation becomes effective on July 1st, and there appear to be some creative thoughts about how to get in the window and have gray machines for one year and see what the General Assembly does next year.
Okay. I vote aye on the continuance.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you, Councilwoman Smigel, for trying to sum up what the gaming committee, gaming committee's work has been, and there still is a lot of work that we have to do. Even though the legislation has been passed, there are still gray areas. Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
The gray machine is gray areas? Legislation? Yes, I vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
And just real quick, I forgot to mention, we originally thought that the tax on this that was coming back to the locality was $1,200 per machine every month. And, you know, when the gaming committee discussed this, we, wow, I mean, think about, that's a half a million dollars coming in at one location in that year, particularly with the budget deficit. But we unfortunately found out that 84% of that is going actually to COVID relief and only 14% comes back to the locality and then 2% to the ABC board for operational purposes. So there were some, like Andrew said, gray areas with the gray machine legislation, and we've been working through that. So we appreciate everybody's patience. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clark, give others?
Yes, R7 is a resolution appointing Kim Y. Sutter to the Norfolk City Planning Commission for a certain term. Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
And I have one other, sir.
Mr. Clark, a red one?
Can I add something, please, to that? I think it's great because we just appointed Kim, and today is her birthday. It's a great birthday present. We gave her a lot of work to do, but she's up to the task for it.
Thank you. R8 is an ordinance to schedule two public hearings, one on June 24th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, and one on June 25th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the council chamber to hear comments related to the adoption of the proposed Second Amendment initiative ordinance. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice-
Mr. Pischko, can I ask another question? I apologize.
Yes, Mr. Smigel.
This was, I know this was added on last minute. I asked this question the last time we did this public hearing, but will, are we permitting those speakers who spoke at the first public hearing to speak on the same issue on the second day of the public hearing?